Today is September thirteenth. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I would please ask everyone to rise to say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have next item is to approve our agenda. We have an addition that needs to be done today, and that is the certificate of county levies. So I'm going to make the motion. We add that as a under commissioner discussion at the bottom and then approve the rest of the agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second on favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And what is that thing we're adding? It's called the certificate of county levies. Doug sent you all the levies for the different districts. Should be in your packet. We have to certify that and get it in the minutes that we accept those levies. Okay. Okay, so we'll move right on down our agenda. Our next item, these are all action items. The meeting minutes is September eleventh. If you get a chance to look at those.
We approve the meeting minutes of September eleventh.
We have a second. Second, moved to second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Now I got to find. Perfect. Our next agenda item is also an action item. This is a proclamation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Valley County Board of Commissioners in the state of Idaho do hereby proclaim the week of September nineteenth through the twenty-third. Should be two thousand twenty-three. A septic smart week. We, the Valley County Board of County Commissioners in the state of Idaho, urge all people to join me in this special observance and urge one and all to pump and maintain their septic systems. We all sign this proclamation.
I thought this was important to put on here. This was at the recommendation of the Valley County Soil and Water Districts. So it's in support of their efforts also. It's a great thing to do, and I would move that we approve the Septic Smart Week proclamation.
A second.
Second.
Moved to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next agenda item is another proclamation. Mount Nutrition Awareness Week. And the purpose of this. Just all of it does. Is there another page? Yes, sir. Sorry. Okay. Therefore, in the Valley County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim September eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three is Mount Nutrition Awareness Week in Idaho. I'll make the motion to approve this proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved to second at all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I will be reading that tomorrow afternoon at the senior center in McCall. They're having a large event. Around this.
Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is a resolution twenty-three dash twenty. Now for their, therefore be it resolved by the Valley, by the Board of County Commissioners of Valley County does hereby make the following, a petition to form an ambulance service district and to dissolve the Valley County Emergency Services District in compliance with Idaho Code section thirty-one, three nineteen eleven, dash four and dash five. Has published notice and conducted public hearings on the thirty-first of July. And here consider agency and public comments. In reference to the petition filed in Valley County, it has complied with notice requirements and conducted, we conducted a public hearing on the thirty-first day of July, two thousand twenty-three to hear and consider any public comment. This is in compliance with Idaho Code section thirty-one, three nine oh eight, one C and F. To form an ambulance service district and directing the county clerk to publish notice of an elections pursuant to Idaho Code section thirty-one, three, thirty-nine, eleven, with the name of Valley Countywide, Countywide EMS District and the boundaries including all of Valley County, the state of Idaho. This petition to form an ambulance service district and to dissolve, to dissolve Valley County Emergency Services District. Board of County Commissioners has the authority to call for a special election to organize a new countywide ambulance district. Hey. This is a special election, that a special election be held on Tuesday following the first Monday in November of two thousand twenty-three, which is November seventh, to authorize Valley County Board of Commissioners to organize and propose new countywide ambulance district to be named the Valley Countywide EMS District. The Valley County Board of Commissioners is authorized and does hereby call for the conduct of this special election to be held on November seventh. Valley County Clerk is directed to administer this special election. I don't know how much more to read, Doug. This explains this.
I think just to notify the public that does provide the ballot layout or the, and that's the ballot layout that would be presented to my office to.
Official county. This resolution shall be in full force and effect when passed and approved by the Valley County Board of Commissioners. Therefore, I need a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion up, approve the resolution. As read.
I'll second.
Moved in second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and today is the eighteenth.
That's just so we can put it on the election this fall.
That's correct.
You got the other one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is also a resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Valley County, setting forth calling for the conduct of a special levy election pursuant to Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two. To submit to electors of the Valley County Emergency Services District. A ballot question as to whether or not the Valley County Emergency Service District's budgets, property tax levy revenues pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-one, three, thirty-nine, oh eight, dash four, may be increased by establishing a base amount not to exceed the sum of three million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. And, and no sense beyond the amount the district is otherwise authorized by Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two, commencing in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and then established as the base budget for the purposes of Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two. This resolution provides for notification of the call for a special levy election to the Valley County Clerk to be held November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, providing a form of the special election ballot question and requesting the Valley County Commissioners to canvas the special levy election and requesting the Valley County Clerk to certify the special levy election results to the Valley County Emergency Services District Secretary and directing the Valley County Emergency Services District Secretary and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners of Valley County Emergency Services District does hereby make the following findings concerning the Valley County EMS Service District's need for additional funds to pay for the district's operations of providing ambulance transport and emergency medical services throughout Valley County. Board of Commissioners of the district has determined that in order for the district to adequately perform its purposes, it is necessary that additional ad valorem property tax revenues be obtained to staff equip and maintain the district operations, which is reasonably anticipated to be needed in order to enable the district to provide ambulance transport and emergency medical services throughout Valley County. Board of County Commissioners call for a special levy election to increase the dollar amount of the budget from personal property tax revenues beyond that authorized by Idaho Code section sixty-three, eight oh two. And the Board of County Commissioners of the district finds that in order to be reasonably prepared to meet the future demands for services and needs of the district, the board must increase its budget from property taxes by the sum of three million, one hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars beyond the amount authorized by the Idaho Code section sixty-three, eight oh two, commencing in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five, which was, shall then be established as the base budget for the purposes of Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two. These funds are needed for operating, providing, and providing, of providing, that's kind of a double, double there, for operating and providing ambulance, transport and emergency medical services throughout Valley County. This will be raised through an increase in ad valorem tax levy pursuant to Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two, one, dash, H. And it is necessary due to the need to provide for an increase in the district's budget from property tax revenues commencing in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, that a special levy election shall be called by the board and the Valley County Clerk to be so notified to conduct said special election in accordance with the provisions of Idaho Code thirty-four, one oh six, one B, on Tuesday, Monday, November seventh. The purpose of the statement for this call for a special levy election question pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-nine, nine, fourteen, the board finds that approval of this ballot question will result in a permanent additional tax of twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents per one hundred thousand of taxable assessed value per year based on current conditions. Approval of sixty-six and two-thirds or more of voters voting on the question of the special levy herein call for is required for the approval of the increased in dollar amount of ad valorem tax levy pursuant to Idaho Code sixty-three, eight oh two, one, H. Okay, that's kind of repetitious. Section three, the notification to the Valley County Clerk for, of this call for the conduct, conduct of a special levy election on Tuesday following the first Monday in November of two thousand twenty-three, which is November seventh. Everybody understand this, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution. And it was twenty.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve resolution twenty-three, twenty-one.
I'll second.
Moved in second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That's a lot of repetition. This one take a.
They both do, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Today is the eighteenth.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what will be done now is this will be recorded and then provided to election coordinator, Rich Robinson. He will begin preparation of the ballot in this matter. Would now will be on the ballot for November seventh.
There's a lot of different counties that are working on this right now, the same way we are.
Here's the rest of it, Doug. Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is signed the road project agreement between Valley County and this pit national forest. Mickey, come on up. I was just kind of catching up here. This is for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars as part of the mitigation from stenite repairs.
Yes.
Is this where we're waiting on the FEMA funding?
I believe so.
For that section of road?
Yes.
And the Forest Service is going to reimburse us some?
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent reimbursement.
Cooperation to provide hull and surface aggregate on the stenite road.
Twenty-eight thousand, five twenty-two, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the road project agreement between Valley County and the Forest Service for the total cost of twenty-two thousand, two twenty-two point sixty.
Second. Moved in second. Before we vote on this, is this after he pulls the road back and does all the stuff that? After we do the mitigation, and then it's going to be grab, okay. Here we got a motion, second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
And then there's another sixty-three hundred. Is that separate?
No, I think that was added into the twenty-eight. It's twenty-two something and then the sixty-three hundred.
Okay, so I need to amend my motion then for a total. What is the total?
Twenty-eight thousand, five twenty-two. Six, and sixty cents.
And I amend my motion to include the extra sixty-three hundred for a total of twenty-eight thousand, eight, five twenty-two, sixty. Sixty-six.
Will you second that amendment, Neil?
Second.
Okay, we're going to vote on both motions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Make sure we did that right. Okay. Now our next agenda item, it should be in your packet, is the Summit National Lease Agreement for a two thousand twenty-three Caterbo, Caterpillar CS fifty-six B and a two thousand twenty-three Caterpillar one fifty, all-wheel-drive, different bin numbers. I'm assuming, Mickey, these are for two.
Correct.
And.
I think we already have these, correct?
Correct.
These behind and getting them.
Yeah, we did this, and we're just approving now the expense, correct?
Yes.
Just approving.
We're approving the lease agreements, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and then the next matter is the claim. We have not.
Okay.
Paid them for.
Is that for the fifty thousand, eight forty, eight eighty-four?
Yeah, one is fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty cents. And then the next one is fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents for a total of a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
What he said.
What he said. So I need a motion to approve both leases.
I'll make a motion that approve both lease agreements for the twenty-twenty-three cat, CS fifty-six B and the twenty-three cat one fifty AWD.
I'll second.
Moved to second and all favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, and we all three sign this?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would just like to thank Brian Oki for expediting this matter and reviewing it. As you can see, the cover sheets have been completed.
It's just a, is this just a one-year lease?
It does.
No, it's a five-year.
Well, it is five years.
And after five years for a dollar, we can buy it.
I'm going to hand it to them, and I'll start the next one. You buy it for a reduced rate?
We get it for a dollar. We get it for a dollar at the end of the five years.
Seriously? I get in on that?
Uh, no. Called conflict of interest.
Right.
Well, you go to work at the road department.
Not.
You can use it.
Yours have the signature from Summit National Bank as well. Yep, perfect, perfect, thank you.
Keep it all together, so that's done.
Oh, I don't think I dated mine. I thought one had a date on it or not, Mickey. I may not have dated it. Oh.
Did you send us those levy rates, Doug, or did they come from somebody else?
Uh, it's included in your packet, team, Mr. Chairman.
In the packet, okay.
Yeah, it's titled Certificate of County Levies, I believe.
Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item that was added this morning. This is a certificate of county levies. This is in your packet. And Doug, I'll let you kind of explain this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, this is what I was working on all last week, preparing the L-two worksheets from the taxing districts and making sure that all of their documents were included and provided to our office in preparation for certifying the levies for tax year two thousand twenty-three, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. We did in fact receive all of the L-two worksheets and the supporting documents. Uh, and then my office, myself, reviews them, enters in the figures, and then comes up with the levy rates, makes sure that the levy rates are underneath the maximum allowed by law, which all of them were. There were no modifications that needed to be made. I do also want to let you know the school districts did in fact fill out their L-two worksheets correctly as well in identifying the payment that they received from the state regarding House Bill two ninety-two. So those documents were in fact filled out correctly. They did account for those payments that were received. So the property tax reduction that individuals are going to see related to House Bill two ninety-two will go into effect because the school district levies will be decreased by the amounts that they had received from the state, from.
But there'll still be a levy for.
There's still a levy, yeah, it's just going to be reduced. Uh, but Commissioners, what I would like to do is present to you the certificate of county levies for Valley County. Uh, that is for all the taxing districts that fall within Valley County.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to see what the overall levy rate actually decreased to. Did you look at that by any chance?
Commissioner Mopkin, I didn't take a close look of what that reduction would be specifically for the school, which is Cascade School, number four-two-two, and McCall Donley School, four-two-one. I, I can look and then provide that information to you later today to tell you what the decrease would be.
Okay.
Doug on hearing the Lake Cascade School that talks about it, temporary supplemental. Isn't that what they were supposed to pay off?
That's correct, and they didn't pay it off. Uh, it's, they didn't receive funding to pay it off altogether, but they did receive funding to reduce the amount that they're going to be levying for.
Well, they're not paying them off of, what, a certain amount?
Correct, and I, I thought they're, they were going to pay them off entirely, but I guess that's not the case. They're only providing them with a portion of the payoff.
So are we going to be able to explain this on the tax bills? Or I know Joanna's not here, but how are we going to show the taxpayer that they got relief? Because they're not going to see.
I believe Treasury Department was in fact going to include a notice to inform the taxpayers about the reduction specifically related to the House Bill two ninety-two, but I don't know for a fact if that's going to be done.
She told us last week they're doing that document, the whole brochure coming from the Treasurers Association. So the entire state will have the exact same conversation with taxpayers. So there is no mixed messaging coming out. It'll all be the same.
Hey, so if everyone is good with these levies, I'd entertain a motion to approve this certification of county levies.
I move that we approve the certificate of county levies for two thousand twenty-four, correct? It was two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Yep, twenty-four, twenty-five. Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Is there anything we need to sign or?
Mr. Chairman, I sign on your behalf.
Oh. Use my little stab thing.
Yeah, the, the clerk of the Board of County Commissioners actually signs this document, and then I will provide this to the State Tax Commission today. Uh, today is the deadline for the State Tax Commission to receive this document.
Okay, we're going to move on. Our next agenda item is an action item. Now we approve the, the contracts for the two caterpillars for the road department. Now we have the claims that we need to approve the, I guess you might call them a down payment. And that's what the next agenda item is, approved payment for Summit National Lease Agreements. And we all three sign this. And Doug has got them here, he's got the envelopes and the checks kept. So I guess we probably better do this. This would be for a total of a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
One oh two, two seven, three, fifty-one.
Yes, and that's for both cats.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Summit National Lease Payments in the total of one oh two, two seven, three point five one.
In second?
Second.
Moved in second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I went back, I had the levy from two thousand nineteen, and this year's tax levy will be under what it was in two thousand nineteen. So that's good news.
Hey, do you know, is Jeremy coming in on this next one, Doug?
I thought he was, but it looks like Assessor Leapers here and Cartographers here as well. But I thought he was going to present directly to the Commissioners.
And we have Pacific Office Automation, is that the one? And there's no dollar amount on it. Do you know what that is, Sue?
I do not. Uh, I just saw that it was on the agenda, so I decided I probably should join.
Um.
Uh, I did, we did talk to him about a week ago. He had put an email into Pacific requesting what it would cost to lease a plotter.
We go ahead and just wait on that, go ahead and go to the Ignite Idaho and see if. In the way.
Yeah, if not, we'll. Hey, Jeremy, it's up. You have something on the agenda, yeah. You want us to wait or you? Are you? Okay, we'll see you in a minute. Bye. He's on his way. Let's move on down, and we'll do the other nine, ten. Oh, wait a minute. Um, that's not going to work because you guys are going to get thirty minutes. So we're, we're going to mute ourselves and wait for Jeremy to show up. Do this next one, and then we'll go to To Ignite Idaho. Do you guys need a little more time? It's just like the big white, or Lori, come on up. What, it just does the big wide, like, um, is that spinal plats and that?
Yes, it's the big plotter that we do all of our CAD plats on, our subdivision plats that hang in the folder. Um, any plat that we review through the cities.
And the old one is wore out, or what's?
We've spent a great deal of money putting parts into it and ordering paper and ink, and it's still not working, and we've just spent a lot of money. And it seems like it's not going to resolve the issue.
Old machine, is it?
Gosh, I remember we got it before Tamara came, and I don't remember.
Oh my, is that old?
Five or six years.
Twenty years old, almost twenty years old.
I think it's similar to that big printer that the.
And it's expensive to find someone to come up and do the repairs.
Hey, Jeremy, come, come on up. Kind of toast. Good morning, it's good to see you.
Good morning, I apologize. I got wrapped up in something, totally.
Welcome to my life. So what have we got going here? We're going for a lease?
Yeah, so, um, I may have mentioned it that there's a Canon plotter in the cartography office that they use to print the big mats for the public and for their records and stuff. It's an older printer, it's been moved around a lot the last year or so, they've been having a lot of problems with the print quality. Um, it'll print fine, and then it'll be faded or not print certain parts of the ink and things like that. It'll print the, or clean the print heads, which will resolve the issue for a little while, but that takes a ton of ink to clean those print heads and. Resolve the issue for a little while, but that takes a ton of ink to clean those print heads and so we're replacing the ink all the time. This year alone, we've replaced two print heads, which is the actual part that actually prints onto the paper. And those are like 400 bucks a piece and they should be replaced every couple of years, not twice in the same year. So and we've had a technician come up and go through it and clean it all out for about 900 bucks. And it's still. Not printing good all the time. Again, it's still printing good sometimes, but other times it's all messed up. So instead of just throwing hundreds or thousands of dollars at this thing a year. I looked into just getting it replaced with the newest version of that plotter. From the same company that we did our other printers on, so it'll be the same NASPO. Contract, I've already spoken with Mr. Oki and he's fine with that since the same contract, we're not changing anything or anything like that. So that's what I'm here to ask for, it'll be about 100 and actually have it right here. 183 dollars a month for the lease for five years, so it'll add. 2200 bucks a year to the printer line item that Clerk's Office pays the printer lease out of.
Sounds like a good thought, good idea. I would move that we approve the lease for the new plotter for the. Can't say that. Cartography division.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. That was going to be a total of 29, 2196 a year, is that correct? And that's in your budget?
So like I said, it'll come out of whatever, it's not on my budget, there's a line item that the Clerk's Office pays for the printer stuff out of.
Oh, that's in 0118.
0118, you got it.
So whether this will take it over, I don't know if it will or not.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve this lease, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, my motion carries. Anything we need to sign here or do you just get her coming?
Laurie will be happy.
They've been struggling with it for months, it's frustrating for them.
What's available, Elliot, on getting one of those?
Does this sound like it was too bad? Couple of weeks or a month or so.
They haven't seen the old one, did they get?
They'll take it.
Oh, okay.
Do something with it?
Wasn't any warranty or anything, it was old?
No, it's been here, it's been here since longer, but I've been here since. It's been a while.
That's a long time.
Fifty years, man.
It was originally a lease that was done when I got here, so it's been here for a while.
Hey, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Hey, our next agenda item is not an action item, but this is a presentation from Ignite Idaho. Shannon, who's whoever, come on up. Good to see you again.
Hi, my name is Tracy Jamison, I'm the Executive Director at Ignite Idaho Family Resource Center. I'm excited to be back here sharing with you the progress Ignite Idaho has made and continues to make. Ignite Idaho is growing in vast numbers of ways. We have two licensed clinicians, three part-time staff and one full-time staff at this time. We have numerous volunteers as well. We are expanding and moving into a larger space starting October 1st. The space is also in the Park Street Professional Plaza in McCall. And it's tripling the size of our current suite. We've developed a wellness program for families. This program allows parents to drop off children for up to two hours to get their needs met. Before advertising this project, we averaged 20 hours of drop-in per week to provide parents the services in our building. Recovery classes, counseling appointments, coaching, professional meetings and chiropractic visits, to name a few. We are in the process of being licensed through Idaho Stars to expand this program. We continue to offer parenting with love and logic and active parenting of teens at no cost along with childcare and dinner. We continue to collaborate with Jamie's Place to help with childcare and food costs. This program serves eight to 20 families each session. We average over 175 walk-ins in our resource center each month. Provide connections to many services like domestic violence, counseling, recovery, housing, food assistance, parenting and many others. We continue to have middle school and teen support groups each month to help with connection and support to our youth in our area. We have partnered with McCall Donley School District to help with at-risk youth and their families. We are working on providing mobile recovery services for teens to help destigmatize recovery and help overall outcomes. We are expanding our comprehensive in-home behavioral health services for families in Cascade this year. In the past year, we provided over 100 hours of in-home behavioral health to Donley and McCall families. We are completing our credentialing process at this time in order to accept Medicare, Medicaid as well as other insurances for our services. Like I mentioned, we provide a lot of downstream services, intervention and education for families who are struggling. By providing both an 11-slot, full-day preschool childcare option. And a one to two-hour wellness drop-in program, we will be able to provide additional upstream prevention services to our community. We received the HERSA Behavioral Health Grant and we're in our second year of four years. The Laura Moore Cunningham Foundation has helped us again for the second year and a few other smaller grants. As well as donations that have helped us continue to be able to offer all of these services at a minimal or no cost to these families. We just recently applied for the IDJC Rural Replication Grant. For Valley County Assessment Center to help local law enforcement and health and welfare to intervene early and reduce recidivism rates in our area. We also applied for the Idaho Workforce Development Childcare Grant. To help families have a supportive community and develop their children. We are looking forward to hearing these results the first week of October for both the grants. We are trying to secure around 15 to 20,000 in order to complete all necessary steps in the moving and expansion process. This will help ensure families are able to continue to receive these important services. So far, we've raised approximately 10% of our needs. I'm not sure if I mentioned in the past, our programs are using assessments to help show progress and areas of improvement. Dr. Royce Hudson, Professor at BSU. Has been working closely with us to acquire assessments that are evidence-based to show effectiveness in our programs. And to fulfill our mission in strengthening families and preventing child abuse. We understand the need of our community and we're trying to fulfill the gaps in services and resources. Thank you for your time.
Tracy, I think one of the big issues that I was interested to hear was that you're going to get Medicare, Medicaid. Help cover some of these expenses, that's kind of a new thing, isn't it?
Yeah, so right now. The only licensed clinicians that can use those services are LCSWs. Starting January of 2024, all other licensed clinicians will be able to do that. So we are in the credentialing process to be able to offer those services as soon, if not sooner than January 1st. And we're working with some other organizations and collaborating to be able to offer those services. Right now, we've got grants that allow us to do free and reduced counseling. But we're hoping to be able to make that billable, that'll be our sustainability.
And your business model to come down on the mobile assessment stuff, more down this end of the valley. If you guys, do you have transportation, have you got budget for all that?
Right now, yes, we're working on some of that once. I mean, we have the grant for, you know, three more years and it has all of that in there. I know that Medicare, Medicaid sometimes has those billable services as well. So, I mean, I'm saying very soon we'll be credentialed. We're all credentialed and able to bill, just not through Ignite Idaho right now. So we're now getting Ignite Idaho to be able to be. An actual clinic or service that can also.
Well, Tracy, when you say Medicare, you know, I start thinking federal government stuff. Do strings, have you looked into what strings come attached to use and be able to use those services?
Absolutely. So because we're licensed already privately and through like Central Idaho Counseling, we work with them. We've already dealt with, you know, the documentation, we've gone through trainings to show exactly what that looks like.
What's required in the certification, I mean, what is the, what is the chance that you're not going to get certified? Is it pretty much just?
There's no, I mean, we will be certified. Like I said, we're already independently, we're just now getting Ignite Idaho. As a whole, so people can work under us and we can have more services. For example, the in-home behavioral health, it's parenting, behavioral health and therapeutic intervention. That's a program that I developed, it's not even billable at this time. So we're working to get that billable through health and welfare, Medicaid, all of those things. So those services are new, but the progress and the transformation in these families is unbelievable. And so that's kind of what we're working on as well, to be able to build these services. And it be less of a, you know, financial strain.
If you're all currently certified individually, are you charging Medicare and Medicaid right now to recoup that on an individual basis?
Only if it's through our private practice, nothing through Ignite Idaho.
But I think that's important for long-term funding. After the grant grows away, then you're going to be relying on that to keep going?
Yes.
Have you been in discussion with the Health District as far as they have a program, big time down in Ada County, Parents as Teachers?
You mentioned that last time, Shannon and I were going to look into that.
Yeah, the reason I would really like it to, because right now the funding's kind of stuck in Ada County and I've been pushing, hey, can we spread that out to some of the other counties? And get this program started, well, we need to see their program first. And it sounds to me, maybe I'm off here and I want your opinion on this, but a lot of the counties built crisis centers. Where someone that's odier is and, you know, pulled over or in a bad situation, have somewhere to go to sober up for the night. Seems to me like we're getting everything done but that facility. We just need a building now to put all you guys into and we would have a crisis center, correct?
Absolutely, I mean, and that's my long-term goal, is to be able to have a building that has, you know, Ignite Idaho as the hub. You walk in, what do you need? We're going to find you what you need, it doesn't matter what it is. It could be from housing to childcare, to counseling, to recovery, treatment programs. We want you to be able to walk in, when somebody is in need, the need is probably more than just one. So we want to be able to assess them and say, hey, you know, what can we actually help you with? If you get them in there, that means they're willing and they want help, they just don't know where to go from here. So being able to have them walk into the building and us to say, wow. You know, you just moved here, you're, you know, you've got a great support system in your family, all right, well, we've got all these youth services. We've got these parenting classes that, you know, strengthen your family. Or wow, you're, you know, you're struggling to even keep your home, you don't have any food. Okay, well, here's these resources. So just kind of having that broad lens, because I think that, you know, for the last 18 years living here and seeing, I mean, we lived at the Shepherd's Home. We worked with foster kids, we adopted kids. There's that huge gap when people don't feel supported or they've lost hope. They don't reach out. So for us to be able to say, you can call this number, you can walk into our office, we have. You know, a confidential space for you just to tell us what's going on. We're not going to judge you, we just want to know how can we strengthen your family to strengthen our community?
Are you guys going to look for central location, you know, you're in McCall right now, is that working? Where's your main caseload?
Our main caseload, I mean, I think it's expanded. But I think McCall is a good place because with the IDJC Assessment Center Grant, we put in that we would be willing to work with Garden Valley all the way to Cambridge. We've got clinicians that work for other agencies that are willing to contract with us. We put all that in the grant to do the assessments and all these other areas, including Riggins. So we're saying, hey, you have a need, you can call us, you don't have to come to our location, call us and we'll get somebody in your area. If we can't get somebody in your area, Ashley or I will go to your area.
You are central where you're at then. So I know that wraparound services are really, really critical to those that are the low-income housing needs to. So when we go after tax credit financing for some kind of a housing project to get that 30% AMI. They really need wraparound services to go with it. The Housing Trust has two units down in New Meadows that are 30% and they get trashed. Because there are no wraparound services to go with it. And so being able to, you know, be in locations where is that lower income. Is super critical.
So New Meadows has, the mayor has offered us to be able to be in their location. Maybe one or two days a week when they do complete their process in their youth center. And I believe.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. So that we're, that's why we're really trying to do this mobile piece and have these clinicians from all over, even if it's only one or two hours a week that they can offer us. They're offering it in their area and these children and their families are able to connect with that provider. And we can offer those resources, so we went just this last month, Ashley and I, she's our other licensed clinician. Went to Cambridge and did two teen support groups in their school. The first two weeks that school was open. These kids were so excited to have people there. We brought food, drinks, I mean, they just came in, they did surveys, they told us how they were feeling, what they wanted. And then Yak and Planet Youth, they have a colleague that works out there. And she is now continuing those services. So the kids are still getting them, but we don't have to actually be right there. So bringing in a couple of people, we had a lady from Midvale actually come to the program that we were offering. Just to get understanding and what could she do for her area? So.
Interesting.
People are listening, they're coming, they want to be involved. And that's really why I'm here today, not to say, hey, I need money, I do need money. But to also say, here's the awareness, like, how can we tell everybody we know? I mean, statistics show if I tell one person, they tell 11 people, right? So I just want to keep telling people. We're here, call us, you don't have to come in. You know, because I don't want people to feel like that's another barrier or limitation for them, you can call us. We don't need you to come and see us face to face for us to give you services. Recently, we had St. Luke's reach out and a barrier for them was. Language, so they didn't have somebody that spoke Spanish. So we ended up being able to help fund a clinician from Boise to work with a family up here. So, I mean, it's happening and it's amazing and I'm just here to say, here's the awareness. You know, we're trying to reach 15 to 20,000 dollars, we're working, we have online fundraisers, we're, you know, talking to people, we're applying for grants, we are active. And we're here to say, we're ready to help these people, we want to strengthen our community.
Tracy, you can remind, how much did the county give you last year?
15,000 of the opioid settlement funds.
And I know there's going to be a lot more opioid money coming in here, hopefully pretty quick, where I always send out stuff with the state is receiving, but. He doesn't know how that's going to be broke up into the counties.
Well, I just spoke with.
We're going to see a lot more opioid funds coming this way.
Awesome, and I just spoke with the V Corp and we are putting a request in for some of those funds. Just to continue, you know, adding, so we're not depleting, you know. But I think all of these new, the wellness project. The Medicare, Medicaid, all of those things are going to show sustainability and just continue to help us grow.
Please, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We just put all of our budget for these types of services into one bucket and V Corp is helping us, you know, disseminate that information, so that's definitely the right path to go.
Okay, yeah, we're just waiting for an approval, so yeah, we're excited.
And then please look into the Parents as Teachers of the Health District, because I think down there, it's like 180,000 dollar. Project or program, a budget for them, for folks in Ada County, and it's like, we need this up here too.
Yeah, and we have a master's level teacher that's working with us. She's going to be able to put some curriculum together for this new wellness project, for the preschool that we're going to develop and, so I mean. Yeah, so I think we could definitely, you know, show that we're, you know, we have the education behind it.
Show me the demand, if we have this money in this curriculum, we could do this up here.
Yeah.
So that I can go back to the Health District and say, we need to pull some money from somewhere else and make sure that this gets funded.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Tracy, do you have very much input from the Hispanic community on this Ignite Idaho?
Very little, and we're working to find somebody that is fluent. Like I said, our master's level educator, she isn't 100% fluent, but she has learned. Like I said, our master's level educator, she isn't 100% fluent, but she is learning and she's able to communicate. The one that we're working with in Boise, they were able to come in, fill out their paperwork at our location and feel comfortable. So we are working on that.
How can you guys partner together with YCAP? Because YCAP has eight, 10 seats in Donley. They are preschool, very low income. They have the Hispanic community as their, you know, so partnering with them would be a benefit.
Okay.
I don't know if-
And is Regina still there?
Is who?
Regina?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll call her. I mean, we've worked together in the past and I think that would be a great opportunity for both of us.
Yeah, agreed.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, we're going to keep on going. We're only six minutes behind. Not too bad. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is RFPs for elevator maintenance and propane services. Scott, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, here are the bids that have been received for propane. And then I only received one for elevator maintenance, but I heard Scott say there was two, but-
No.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't aware. I didn't know how many were-
Missed you then, sorry.
Actually turned in, so.
But you want to do the elevator one first?
Yeah.
This is from Premier Elevator Company LLC. Didn't see where they're from.
He's out of Emmett.
Emmett? And this is for four quarterly inspections. And then four quarterly at EOC. We have two elevators in this building, right?
Yes, yep, we have them.
Okay, okay, here, I just see per elevator.
Yep.
So it's $1,380 annually per elevator. And then they go on and explain, emergency or after-hour labor rate is $220 an hour and $250 an hour on holidays and weekends.
I'm trying to write this down.
So the total annual for three elevators is $4,140.
So what was, it was 250 per hour after hours. What was the rate?
220 during regular hours. It's more than our TEC attorneys make.
A 4140?
What's going on here? I'm in the wrong business again.
This guy's bank bank, let me tell you.
So Scott, would the five-year review be different than this? These are the annual reviews. Do they include the five-year review at all or?
No, because that's, because we're not due for it yet. Probably, I think we have one more year. Because we had the five-year, my first year here, so.
And what was the name on that one though?
This one is Premier Elevator Company LLC. And it is out of Cherry Lane in Emmett, Idaho. Interesting, what kind of schooling you'd have to go to get, being an inspector of elevators?
Now, actually, he had worked for Schindler for quite a few years and worked on our elevators. So he has a history of working with them, so, and stuff, so.
And this is a state thing we have to do anyhow.
Yeah, we have an annual. So it's, it's three inspections plus our annual.
According to this, it's every quarter, four quarterly inspections on the courthouse elevators and the EOC elevator. So I'm assuming you do all of them at the same time.
Not bad.
So what's your, what's your pleasure?
Is that the only bid?
That's the only bid.
Schindler didn't bid it?
What? No, I guess not.
Interesting. All right, I would move that we approve the Premier Elevator Company bid for services on our elevators for $4,140 annually.
Second. I moved a second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any second to get this signed.
Can I get that from you then?
Please, that would be great.
Doug, you got a test? Right.
Has anybody heard anything about bids on fuel? I don't know, fuel bids?
We're still, we still got to go out yet for fuel. But we're going to move on now. Our next agenda item is RFPs for propane services. And it looks like we have three. Is that right, Scott?
I believe so. Because I really don't know until you guys, you know, get up here filed with the clerk's office.
Okay, the first bid, somebody will write all this down, I hope. First bid is from AmeriGas. And we had this set up to be above the state price, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. It's Bellevue, whatever.
Yeah. Okay, this is from AmeriGas out of Caldwell, Idaho. The unit price per gallon above Bellevue rack price in all, all of our different propane areas is 33 cents. Estimated gallons is around probably around 23, 24,000 gallons we used last year.
Yeah, around there.
I'd have to add it up. But it's at 33 cents. That's AmeriGas. And I just received a letter here about two or three weeks ago from AmeriGas that they're instituting a lot of new fees.
33 cents above?
Above Bellevue rack.
What is that?
That's basically what they buy it from.
Bellevue rack?
Bellevue rack. Most propane companies buy it on the same-
Distributorship type deal.
So this is above that. The next one is from Ed Staub and Sons Propane. And this one comes in at a dollar three over rack price for all of them. And then they've got tank rentals, $100, oh, I can't, must be a dollar a year rental for the sheriffs, one for the EOC, for the McCall Annex, Francie Wallace, Wellington, U of I, and Road Department. So the tank rental's a dollar a year and the rack price is a dollar three. And then there's a $270 farm marshal permit. Okay, so that was Ed Staub. And the last bid is from Valleywide, same general bid, and this is this, this comes in at 32 cents above Bellevue rack price and the tank rentals are all a dollar per year. No other additional costs.
So AmeriGas didn't show any tank rentals or anything.
Um, no, this letter that we got, no, they didn't show anything on the bid form as the tank rental. But the letter we got from them here a while back was pretty specific about there's some hazardous waste fees. There's tank removal fees of $300. There was a lot of-
There's glass reclaim fees. That's the thing with that bid is there's a lot of hidden fees that you actually don't see.
That you don't see.
Yeah. And plus, there's no one local to talk to. I think you go to a call center in the Philippines when you we have other, I do have the local drivers and they've been good responding to me, but.
They have, they list their address now as Caldwell, Idaho.
Mm-hmm. AmeriGas?
Yeah.
And there's only seven tanks? So it's $7 a year for tank rental?
No, not all. There's more. We own, we own our tanks here, the one at Francie Wallace. So our rental is our two 500 gallons at the EOC over here. Then we have one down at Wellington and a thousand gallon one at the Annex.
I can read them to you if you want. The Sheriff's Department, Cascade EOC, McCall Annex, Francie Wallace, Wellington Bart, the Road Department, U of I Extension.
We haven't, we haven't set the one for U of I yet because we weren't sure who the new vendor was going to be or who the vendor was going to be at that time because the furnace is just now being installed, so.
It's like $5 for a year for the tank rentals?
Dollar.
Okay, so that's not really-
And no other additional costs of services on the Valleywide. There's a zero there.
And Valleywide is in Valley County, correct?
Right across the road from us here.
Okay, so we all, we give a 10% bump anyway for anybody that's local, so. I would say we stay local and-
Yep, we have a Valleywide.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Valleywide contract at 32 cents per gallon for our propane services.
Is that a second? Is that a second Neil?
Yes.
And moved a second to award the propane bid to Valleywide Co-op.
Do I need to state that that's above the Bellevue rack so that there isn't any confusion on that?
Bellevue is spelled, I'll show it to you. It's kind of an interesting word.
Yeah. Let me rephrase that to state that it's 32 cents above the Bellevue rack price.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion, second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank all three for bidding on this.
What the heck's the day? 1818?
It's gone way too fast.
Doug, you got a test and then misses. I think this was Valleywide. And these we, did I, did I hit?
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to the elevator bid? I found this document, but it wasn't sealed in an envelope and it does appear to be from Schindler. I apologize.
Oh my. Yeah, let's finish this up and then we'll go back and look it up.
Sorry, Scott.
And that one is rejected.
All right, I just saw this. Okay, we'll go back and look it up. Yes, please.
It's right here.
Yep, it's right there in that folder.
Okay, so we're going to go back. We just received this bid for the elevator part of this. And then you have the first one, so we can compare, Doug, I guess.
You want the other one back?
Yeah, why don't you bring it back, Scott, just for a second. This one is from Schindler. Where the heck did it go? Schindler Elevator Corporation. Thanks. And this is the number of maintenance calls is one per year for both the courthouse elevators and the EOC. The proposed, proposed amount is $250 a month or $3,000 annually for the two courthouse elevators and $1,500 annually for the EOC. So it's $1,500 each a year, but that only gets us one maintenance calls.
I don't, I haven't read them.
And the after-hours labor rate is $360 an hour. I think we made the right decision.
Yep.
Doug, I think we're good. I don't give it as it is. So we got to reject this one?
Hold on one second. That gives us one, but it's 1380 per elevator-
Right.
Annually. So, and we have, that would be, okay, so yeah, 5520.
She shows it as one.
But it's still.
Number of maintenance calls, one per year.
Okay.
And it's not a maintenance, it's an inspection, correct?
Yeah.
Didn't calculate that out before, but you take the 1380 times four and it's 5520. But they actually stated, or Premier was 4140 annually. There's a discrepancy there in what that actually states.
Okay, with Premier, we get four quarterly maintenance calls or inspections, $1,380 annually per elevator.
Wait, we only have three elevators, not four.
We have three, right.
If we have two here.
I think we made the right decision also.
So Scott, when you're, I may need to talk to maintenance calls, but I mean, is it, what does the state make us do legally to a state inspection annually?
Yeah, we have one, one annual inspection a year.
One annual inspection.
And then every five years they come in, they bring all the weight and do load tests and everything else.
And Scott, oh, I'm sorry, didn't this used to cost us about $6,000 a year? So I guess what I'm trying to say is it paid to bid this out?
Well, we bid it every year and it seems to have come down some.
Yeah.
Because it's gotten more competitive. Because what we found out initially a couple of years ago was there was an automatic 10-year renewal in the Schindler contract. We had to negotiate that to meet, you know, our laws where we only, we do it annually or yearly.
Does the fire department also come over and test annually?
No, you know, I believe, you know, we contact them when we have it inspected and they come over, but-
So they do it with you.
Okay, I think we're good. We got that done. Anything else you need to talk about real quick? Are we all right? Okay, we're going to keep right on going here. We got a lot on the agenda today. The next item is an action item. This is the presentation from Idaho Power regarding potential Gold Dust substation. Come on up, guys, have a seat. Good to see you back. You've been out walking around in the, the Gold Dust site, found a good spot?
I think we did. I think we did.
We've got a few extra copies of our exhibit here if anyone would like them.
So this is just directly on the other side of where we want to put the county shop. Did you guys look down on the other, the eastern side of it at all? Is it just too wet?
Uh, well, so we, you know, after our last discussion, thanks for, thanks for having us.
And can you guys take your name for the record for Doug?
Yeah, I am Dylan Martin.
I'm Chris Jakey.
Jeff Mafuccio.
So after our last discussion, we went down to the Road Department and had a conversation with Scott down there just to kind of get some initial thoughts. It didn't sound like at that time they really had a solid design. I think I read recently, you guys are, have an architecture firm kind of looking at this now and designing. So the reason that we kind of have this initial plan on the, on the west side of the, the property is the transmission line runs on that west side. So it's a easier access for the substation. We're looking at about 1.75 acres, maybe just a little under that in total, which include all the, all the equipment and saying, and then also potential battery storage as well, which has kind of been shopped around up here. And then obviously, you know, kind of work through access with you all and all that good stuff.
Further south is the gun range for the Sheriff's Department, I think.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, that's, that, there was, kind of looked at this spot and then there was one towards the southern end of the property, but yeah, the shooting range was there.
Kevin, you got a second? Can you tell us, is there any plans to move that sheriff's gun range?
In, in the, in the future, we're wanting to just partner with the range out here. We started transitioning to use them as much as we can anymore.
How far away is that transition? A year?
Probably, yeah, yeah, a year. We're going to have to, I know that this year we started putting it into the budget to start partnering with them to pay for the range usage. If that's the right thing to do. I mean, we're, last week we had a nice shoot out there till 1:00. If that's the right thing to do, I mean, we're, last week we had a night shoot out there till one in the morning. We sit out there, so it's a little bit further away from town, but we're trying to, uh, we're trying to bring that out and partner with the range out.
I think one, one item to consider, um, is we'll have distribution lines leaving the station, whether overhead or underground, so the closer to the road they are, uh, it's less, less easement we would need to acquire.
Easement would be on the west side, on that west line?
Yeah.
Cause I know, the last I knew, our surveyor was supposed to go out and mark some corners.
Okay.
Make sure that what we have is what we really have, don't know if he's got that done yet.
If we do that distribution underground, we can, we can actually fit it where our access road would be. We, we've done that in many cases where we, we just put the access road over the, the distribution getaways, we call them. We go out to Gold Dust Road.
Yeah, when I talked to Chip, who's our county surveyor, he thought the corner was out there. He got the three poles on the street and then there's a corner and a brace. And he thought the corner was on the east side of that brace and I thought, hmm, you're hoping it was further to west. So we gotta establish that line, I think Simplot owns that next to us.
To the west, yeah. I think something Chris could talk about is, um, you know, part of this, uh, if we're to move forward is we, we would go out and survey. Yeah, we'd, we would get the appraisal, so, sorry.
No, yeah, so it sounds like you guys have, you know, with the county surveyor, we'd either work in conjunction with them or hire our, um, internal or even a contract surveyor to come out and do all the, all the survey work, um, as well as elevations and things like that for, for building and, at least on, on our area. Um, and we also probably wanna get an appraisal, just for both entities, it's easier to point to.
So the hundred and fifty thousand acres not on the table yet?
It is, but we probably, uh, if it's one seventy-five, you would hate yourselves.
Well, it might be two hundred.
Legally, we gotta have it.
Yeah.
I guess my only concern with this site is that kinda shoots us from wherever expanding out there anymore, but probably not gonna be something that's gonna have septic in it, it'll be more like equipment storage sheds, you know, kinda what that, this big long green building is now, more of those kinda hills out there.
I have a question, I have not been on site, so, right now, if I'm looking at our county GIS, Jeff has a storage facility right where this footprint is. Looks like it's enclosed, have you gentlemen been on site?
Yeah, there's a, it's been kinda cleared out, yes.
This is a salt shed that's gonna be torn down, and right here.
If you look here, now, that, the last time this GIS was done, Jeff had some kind of a storage facility.
That's all gone.
And there is flood, floodway right here.
Can you go down to the sheriff's? Okay, so there's the sheriff's gun range, and that black thing there is a big stack of tires.
That's not, wouldn't impact this at all anyway. Unfortunately, we've had a family loss with our, um, one of the road department supervisors who should be there. And so therefore, I don't have any, you know, I can't ask him any questions as far as this location.
Commissioner Mop and I apologize, and Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, I did receive an email from road director McFadden on Wednesday at three o'clock, I can forward that on to you and you can see what his comments were.
So he's seen this?
I don't know if he has seen it, but he did provide.
Yeah, why don't you send that to us, Doug?
So Al, this building here, it's gonna go away?
Yeah, that one is the salt shed and the whole side's rusted out and they push dirt up against it to keep the walls from falling out. But it's gonna go, but right there is where we wanna build that new shed, new shop.
Here, here?
Right, kind of half into the salt shed and to the west.
Going across?
Yep. That's the ground we were looking at.
So it would have bucked this?
That's what I'm concerned about, they're gonna come out the south end of our shop and gonna be right in that these guys' transfer.
But if they're going, which, that doesn't matter, they're gonna build their road, say, straight out. You guys doing that?
We're, we're flexible on the.
Yeah, currently, currently on the plan, it, it, there's like, you can see like a little U-access, um, road.
Second page.
That can be adjusted to where we.
Oh yeah, this still here?
Yeah, and there's a, kinda zoomed in on the second page, but yeah, this could be adjusted, everything could be moved to where maybe this is the access. Um, you know, where it kinda comes straight in.
So you could access straight in like that?
See, if you look right there, there's this trans, what do you call that? Transmission line.
Structure.
And there's another one set down here somewhere. What we have to establish is where that line is between us here and Simplot.
So it's basically their easement coming down through there anyhow.
And I don't know if the easement's on us or if it's on Simplot.
It's on Simplot.
It's on Simplot?
On that, it's west of that line.
Okay, so then that's telling me that we're really close, right here is about where that line is. And shoot, my pen won't write. And we're looking at using this site right here. My pen's not writing. Portis County Shop.
So tell me about landscaping, what is your north boundary look like? As far as, is it just a fence, is it, what is that?
We can, you know, we, we're pretty open to options, we could do a side obscuring fence, um, we have, uh, we use precast concrete, stamped concrete, we do slatted chain link, we really don't like to, slats deteriorate. Um, we, we can do B-link and then have like some, some, uh, arbor viadas or something along that, you know, that, uh, north side. Um, you know, I, I guess, and then kinda depending on where this.
Or we could.
This building might go if it's on the north side.
This road is kinda.
And we could, we could work that into sign.
When it's, and this building here is all full of trucks.
Eight years also, yeah, we. We're, we're open to whatever the county would like.
This is the access back into gun range, so this is our major. And this is all the weed department down here. What I, I guess, Doug, did you forward that one, see what he says? He wants to see this substation east of the weed department would be ideal, which is further down in here where all these trees are.
I think that what, what we've been really cognizant of is, so there's two kinda connection points with the, with the substation. The, the distribution is kinda Jeff talked about, which in the right spots we can underground to get on the Gold Dust. The, the other act, the other thing is the transmission line needs to get into the substation, so that's, that's kinda why we were looking at the western side, um, knowing that there's a lot of heavy duty trucks and buildings going on in here, you're up, you know, the farther east you go, there's potential for even maybe a structure in the middle of this property, um, to kinda, you know, to keep the lines up going into the substation.
You guys don't have septic approvals or anything like that, is there an issue with like the foundations for all this stuff being in the lower ground? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think it's kinda disgusting.
As long as it's not a wetland, then, which I don't think any of this area really is, um, we won't have an issue. We can build around lower ground, we just have to build, probably the transmission lines taller to go west.
To avoid height.
Avoid height, yep, trucks, buildings.
You have a lot of wetlands.
Yes.
Yeah, that eastern side, according to a lot of the mapping, was, uh, wetland, so the, the main, according to our mapping at least, that, the area where you guys are building and current and then down towards the, uh, shooting range were kinda the spots that weren't.
Yeah, I think what Jeff was thinking is somewhere in this area here, cause we've got a road down through there and there's a lot of stuff down below too, but even the gun range is all, all that's all kind of a low area through there. My first initial look at this is, I don't think it's gonna work for us because we've got, we got some plans for some of that ground and Jeff was saying he would like to see it over on the east side. We'll be using the upper section for the new shop and I will need all that area. It will require them to fill some swampy area, they said they would like to see it close to the main road and that is the only area I could see.
So you're thinking the northeast part of the quarter.
Yeah, up here and this, this choke right here.
That would require a, you know, fill and stuff like that should be okay potentially, but then they, transmission line heading west to go over and connect, so we'd probably have probably three poles along the front of the road, I'm betting, with a big one right on the corner of.
The big one you're talking about?
Gold Dust, right where the three poles are right now, cause that'd be holding all the weight from those wires coming into it as well as the two other directions, um, which isn't.
The wetlands is gonna be an issue.
I don't think it will be for them because they're not, there's not septic or anything involved in their, their build, they can, they can fill it.
Wetlands somewhere else, you gotta.
Yeah, we'd have to explore that, cause I know dealing with wetlands can take a little bit longer and the, the primary on that's a little bit harder, a lot harder.
I just wondered about dropping it further south.
I think it's the same elevation as the weed department building. I'm trying to remember out there, but I don't think that near Gold Dust Road is wetlands.
Well, it is up here, it's on.
Shows it on the map?
It's on the map.
On that, knowing that, you know, uh, they're, Jeff's looking at kinda that, that location where the salt shed is, is there an option to maybe just move the whole thing south a little bit, al- along the same corridor? Or is that whole area?
No, I, I like that idea, even better go further south, maybe, maybe that same distance again.
Yeah, just kinda.
Yeah, just keep going south.
And I, I haven't looked at any of this, that looks like.
If you look.
We'd probably have to fill that in, to the south.
There's kind of a circular pit down there.
Yep.
And he has to have, get to that, that's, there's a lot of material back in there. And then I know kind of about, you know, like, in this area here, there's a lot of stuff, materials stored there as well that, that he uses. Personally, I think it should go further south.
Well, I think knowing that the gun range eventually become disused, uh, makes that more favorable in our, in our minds.
Yeah, and there's actually a residence further south than that. People will live back in there and they use the access road between us and the neighbor to the east. They bought all, and they built a house back in there, so it can't be that wet.
Yeah.
Stayed close to that transmission line.
Where their houses is not wet.
What you guys.
Yeah, there's, that whole ground sits up high and then everything drops to, towards the east.
Where their houses, I can see their house and that is not floodplain, but there is a lot of floodplain. There is some floodplain back there by that gun range too, but.
Which way from the gun range?
Still a lot of information, so this is floodplain, this is floodplain, this is floodplain. Their house is not, they put it in pretty much the only place they could not encounter flood.
Go back down with your house. So if we shot for, the blue lines are wetlands?
That's wetlands also, but they could, they could probably easily mitigate down, that's just ditches. I mean, they could, wish that pretty easily.
So if they slide back.
They slide down.
Down here just above the gun range in that, that section, I think would be awesome.
So you just slide it south and they'd stay right next to their transmission lines.
Would there be any room for, like, just adding a premium on whatever the appraisal comes in? Say the premium, or appraisal comes in at one fifty and we add, we somehow figure out a premium on top of that? Five percent, ten percent, whatever, something. Yeah, I don't know if that, if it's, if, if an additional payment would help? Or if it's like, well, it doesn't even matter because that messes our plans up so much that the money doesn't matter?
But I think you could go south, just, just that chunk again down here and get the same thing done. I would really not wanna go against my road supervisor to ask, he wants that area, he's already stated he's gonna need that area.
That's understandable, we, we're trying to think of, uh.
Just another options or.
If you less fill work we have to do then.
Well, the only thing that's just south of that isn't floodplain, there is some ditches there. You're gonna have to cover a ditch, call it, you know, a ditch, so, you guys, that wouldn't be a big deal?
No.
No.
And then that just leaves us that full access.
So our access road would probably, probably still be in, I mean, down kinda the, the general main road that we've got now? And our getaways would be still run along the west boundary for our distribution? You know, we could probably maybe have another pole or there too?
Shouldn't matter at all.
Okay.
No, and I think that's why I was saying earlier, we need to find that line between us and Simplot because that determines where we can set our building as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then I know Jeff talked about being able to drive clear through the shop and either turn and go around this way or turn and go around the other way.
Yeah, having a loop.
So I'm assuming that along that transmission line would be the best easement in and out.
For access easement also?
Yeah, for access, cause it's never gonna be, have anything built on it.
Yeah.
I'll just have a straight. But we gotta find that property line first.
Yeah.
Probably for both of our use, and then now you guys are not right in the middle of the pit or, you know, right in the middle of our area.
Or in the middle, or in the middle of that one road. We're talking about sliding back about two hundred feet, three hundred feet, going due south.
And I think, you know, I'm just throwing this out here for thought, but if you decide that it ends up taking some of the gun range, maybe you work a deal with the sheriff that helped those guys move that, whatever they gotta do to move their gun range out to Warm Lake and that would be a big plus.
Yeah.
Sounds like we've already got that.
Yeah, but we've got a bunch of tires that we're gonna have to deal with on that one. A bunch. What's that?
Just, just fill it in.
Tires work out, they don't go down, they go up. Amazing how fast they'll unbury themselves.
Unbury the tires?
Yeah.
They get tech tires with them.
I think we can definitely work it out between us, but, you know, I mean, we've got an architect working on this, you guys can have surveyors and all. Everybody can just talk about what's the best for us and you and have great partnerships.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that we'd like sided somewhere there and then your appraisal will determine that. But the further south you can go, the better off, I think, for both of us.
Go ahead, I guess the next steps for us would be kinda redesign further south, um, potentially, you know, yeah, like, again, kinda looking at, uh, the northern boundary on the southern of this one.
Have you guys talked to Simplot about that corner east, west of us?
Yeah, they denied, yeah.
Not interested, huh? I know we tried to buy it years ago and they weren't too interested.
Neither.
And it's just gravel, there's not any, much outside.
But we thought too, I thought it was gonna be a relatively easy conversation to.
All this ground was, was all dredged years ago.
Yeah.
In the twenties and thirties and, and I think this one site right here is one of the few sites that hasn't been dredged. Still the original stuff.
I think all we need really is that, this, this main road coming through here, as long as that stays clear.
Yeah.
You guys can use it, our guys use it.
Yeah. When, do we have a, a, a timeframe on when the architect's gonna have something to view?
Um, we just awarded that last week, two weeks ago, last week. And so we should know here probably within a month.
Okay.
Kinda what that facility's gonna look like, what it's gonna cost, that whole nine yards, what he's supposed to get back on, but I can't guarantee that, who knows?
It's inside architects.
And it's about a fifteen thousand square foot building. It may get downsized depending on the price.
They're right on broadly.
Depending on the price we charge these guys. If you guys need another facility out there. Can't we share a facility?
Now, I, I got another question while you guys are here, I've been getting calls from people back in Yellow Pine that are freaking out about that transmission line to Stibnight, that there are a hundred and ten foot towers and all that stuff. And I just wanted to let you guys know that there's not too many happy folks about that.
Yeah, we've had some conversations with, uh, um, between, uh, Jordan Nielsen with Perpetua, has been working with our, uh, our, our internal project manager on it and they've, um, talked to a couple of the homeowners that have been kinda in the area, uh, uh, power quality, kind of EMF readings on kind of what that looks like. So we've been in contact with a, a, a few of them, to my knowledge, um, that kinda had questions originally about, you know, why are the towers so tall and.
Well, and I think it might be, who would you go back and kinda look where some of those are placed next to residents? Maybe figure out a way you can move them one way or the other, getting away from that house.
Yeah, I think that's the, um, we're still, that's, it's still in the early processes of that and I think there's definitely some discussion on kind of.
And that's only from Warm Lake to Stibnight, that's not clear out here too, right?
Correct, yeah, that's.
You're not gonna go through my place, replace all those, good.
Mainly that, that, there's gonna be a station somewhere along Warm Lake and then we can go out, out from there, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And where, who are you working with on the Warm Lake station, is that for service?
Um, I, I don't know if that's solidified yet, but I, I'm pretty sure it's Davis.
Oh, oh, before, before you even start out that direction, okay?
Yeah, yeah, this side.
This side, Warm Lake, okay.
Uh, cause we have to tie into, uh, uh, existing transmission that kinda runs north south.
I think that goes through the wet ranch, maybe you have to go talk to the governor.
Maybe they can't talk about it on camera.
Still a lot of negotiations there.
Lot of negotiations.
Yeah, and, you know, the big part of it is, is for sure, just getting the route kinda set up at this point. You know, it's getting, getting, getting close.
So I guess the plan here today is you guys go back and relook, see if you can't move it south another bunch of feet and then we'll see where we come back, and then get with Doug and get back on the agenda and we can go from there.
Okay, and do we need to, I, I mean, I guess at this point, what, once we kinda get that set up, do you want us to kinda get into surveying and appraisal on there?
Um, I'm gonna go let, call Chip today and find out if he's. I'm, I'm gonna go let, call Chip today and find out if he's had a chance to go out and mark that.
Okay.
He's a busy guy, he approves all of our subdivisions, he's gotta look at all those plats and lots and, so he's a little behind right now, but if that doesn't work, we may, um, try and find somebody else to come in and survey it.
What did you just get from Chip on all of the easements?
I think, I mean, I, I recognize all the development, I, we'd like to, if, if we move forward, we'd like to be able to survey before snow starts flying because, um.
If you guys want to survey and mark it, that's fine with us.
Okay.
Just that line.
Yeah.
I looked for pins when I was out there the other day and good luck with that.
I think we can get that rolling pretty quick.
Biggest problem up here is finding surveyors right now, they're very difficult.
Yeah, very worried. No, we've, we've got some thorough folks.
Yeah.
Our, our goal is, uh, to have a stationed service to meet load demand, customer demand by, uh, I think, fall of twenty twenty-five.
My hope is that we'll come back and, and solidify this before the end of the year, so you guys can go ahead and budget and get it going.
That, that would be our preference.
Yeah.
And we, we'll need to permit it also, I guess that's another point to make.
Oh, yeah.
Is, um, if we feel confident to purchase and then permit at, at risk or try to permit with an affidavit from the county that we can proceed with that before we own it or take possession.
Um, however you want to do that, we could set it up that we won't.
I don't want to put you all in.
We don't want any money from you until your permit is approved.
Put you all in a position where if, if, whatever the outcome might be at planning zoning commission, y'all are still the decision makers.
Right, 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 we understand that, that's the hardest part of this job.
It's like, huh, how, how do you work that out?
Yeah, and I, my feeling is, you know, if you don't get the permit for some unknown reason, you don't owe us anything.
Okay.
That's the way I would look at that.
Okay.
Your permit comes through who, the state?
Uh, so, well, uh, land use permit.
Oh, land use permit.
And know that, um, I think now you're probably into December anyway.
Okay.
So they're busy right now.
Get on their schedule.
Well, in order to do that, you need the, the site and the design and the layout.
I think that was.
Got some steps in front of that first, we gotta.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was, if it was okay for us to kind of get in and do the boots on the groundwork before the snow flies, that way during the winter, we can work on it and kind of go from there, so.
Yeah, even looking at this page, even if you moved it down to the corner of the picture here, I think would help a lot.
Okay.
You don't have to go clear down to the corner, but give us some space to work with there.
And then also, I, I think some landscaping to the north is gonna be.
Yeah.
Lot of dust.
Yeah.
And then I'd like to see what does that look like coming from fifty-five.
Okay.
I don't have a visual on my mind right now.
It's pretty well.
I don't think you're gonna see it from fifty-five, because there's a big pile of sand between.
We can, we can.
Far back in.
Once we have it set, we can take a typical station and model it, at least get some lanes.
Hey, we good?
Is this similar to the station up there across from Frankton's?
Uh, it won't be as big.
Won't be as big.
Yeah, how about the one on Schline? No, Smiley. Smiley has a substation back in there off the road. That one I like, because you can't see it from anywhere.
Right.
Well, that's one.
It, it'll probably be more like that and these, these batteries, they're like a Connex box, they're like a Connex, oh, just white Connex box, so we can have them painted tan or whatever to.
Are they lithium batteries?
Uh, no, well, they're lithium iron, iron, not lithium ion, so it's a, it's like a salt based chemical. We've been putting them out, we've got a big station out near Murphy, Idaho, we, we put a, a lot of them out there. Uh, we, they're made down in Mexico, it's a, it's a company out of Portland. If that.
Yeah, yeah.
Satisfactory.
You shouldn't have been reading the log about that.
And we've been.
I hear two months, you're right, we may have to hear.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just so I'm clear in the meeting minutes, uh, the Commissioners request to have the matter placed on a future agenda for formal negotiations, but advise that they would allow Idaho Power to conduct surveying of the proposed site.
Perfect.
And that's kind of where we've left it off right now.
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you. And Dylan, if you just want to contact me, we'll get it on an upcoming agenda and continue the negotiations and.
Great, and we'll, we'll email ahead of time, uh, revised location.
All right, thanks you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to conclude the meeting, but. No, no, I, no, 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 you guys still have twenty, yeah, twenty minutes.
You want to sit around and talk about the weather. So mute us off and we'll be back here at ten fifty.
Okay, welcome back everybody. We're at our 1050 agenda. This is an action item. This is to approve ordinance 23-02. Uh Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright, uh yes, this application was in front of you guys, uh back in February. Uh there was a mix-up uh between the staffs to get the ordinance finalized, uh but it is a rezone of a 13 acre parcel that uh facilitate splitting it into a fi- acre parcel and an eight acre parcel. Um guys approved it, um and we just need to get an ordinance and summary published, uh so that'll stand for your questions.
And so we're changing it from rural residence of rural estate saddleism to split this.
Yes.
And I cannot find that ordinance in my.
It's actually on the agenda. They printed the whole thing out.
Got the stuff from Oki on it.
I don't think I was here for that meeting, so I don't know that I feel really comfortable, but you two were here.
Where's it at?
I think that's when I was in DC.
The heck is it? Got 2304.
I'm gonna assume that this is one of the Icola properties.
Yeah.
Is that correct? So.
She came in.
Erica and.
Right.
Splitting off the front.
Oh, I remember that. I remember that. She asked, uh yeah, 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 I don't think you were here on that one.
Yeah.
Can you send me that cherry? I cannot seem to find it. It must be under somebody else's name.
But it's on, I think it's on the agenda.
Well, it is.
It's printed on the agenda.
The sum- the summary of it is on the agenda.
I would move that we approve ordinance 2303 and allow a property to be rezoned from RR to RE in the impact area.
So, let me ask a question, Brian. Why rezone that? Why not just do a variance?
Because variance is a specific.
That's the next one that's gonna be heard.
That has its own standards.
Brian sent it to you directly.
And I looked at Brian's.
Typically only granted in conditions where the property would otherwise be unbuildable.
There, I found it. I found it.
It has some very steep topography.
I found it, dude.
Or a lot of wetlands or something like that, and they need to deviate in setbacks or something along those lines. That's typically what we grant. Or variance is for.
Okay.
So it's a different process.
Yep. Sure, you made the motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
This is a motion to approve ordinance number 2302. You got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Brian, you have something for me to sign?
Uh.
I can print it off. Mr. Chairman will wait one moment.
Okay. And does this take a notary? Nope. So now we want to move on down to our next agenda while that's getting printed, and this is ordinance 2303. And I know we had some discussion about fencing, some other issues. Brian, do you wanna talk about that a sec?
Yes, so uh you guys, August 21st meeting, you voted to approve this ordinance with the modification that fences intended for pasture within RE, RR, and R1 zones do not require a fence permit. I've made that modification, and now again, just uh approve the final ordinance and summary for publication.
So on the retaining walls over four feet shall be reviewed and approved, may be subject to review by the city engineer?
Yeah.
Isn't that a building code that anything over four feet has to be engineered?
Uh anything over four foot is a structure. Um.
The maybe subject to was a little confusing to me because I thought that was part of.
So it would be required to, you know, be structurally designed by, designed by a structural engineer. Um we didn't want to imply that our city engineer is going to.
Have to do it? I mean, so if you've got.
Our building official is going to review their structural documents and all that.
If you got an engineering stamp on it, there shouldn't be need for a review for our city engineer. Okay.
If there are questions from the building official, you may transmit it to the city engineer.
So whatever you get from the, from the uh prints that show it's been engineered already, it's probably already covered all that.
Most likely.
Then all fences and walls within the right-of-way shall require a public works permit. So within the right-of-way, when would you ever allow a structure or fence or walls within the right-of-way?
Um. I do not. No.
Okay, because we should not be allowing, especially walls, but fences or anything in, and within the impact area. You know, we definitely don't want anything within our impact or within our.
Right, I would guess it would be situations where again, there's like a big drop-off or something like that, but somebody wants to fence their property line, so it may need to encroach just a little bit into right-of-way.
Okay.
The other one that I had questions on, Brian, was eliminating the additional parking requirements on developments with private streets. Does that mean you're not gonna require any?
No, there are still parking requirements. Uh generally, it's two parking spaces per residential dwelling unit. Uh there was just a provision that it was an additional three or subdivisions with private streets, uh which brought it to five parking spaces per dwelling, which seems crazy.
Crazy, good.
Thank you.
Depends how many kids you have.
How many cars you have.
They can't park on the street, so they're gonna have to figure it out. But requiring them is a different thing, so.
Okay, so if everyone is good with this, I would entertain a motion in to approve the approval of ordinance 2303.
Well, make a, make a motion to approve uh ordinance 2303 and summary of ordinance 2303.
I have a second.
A second. Do we need the approval of the summary, or was that just for us?
Approval.
It's just, I'm sorry.
Approval.
Okay, alright, and I'll second that.
Okay, been motion and second to approve ordinance 2303, amending Title III, Chapter II definitions and a bunch of other stuff for the, in the McCall area impact. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I'm assuming you don't have that one, so we'll have to print that one too. Okay, so as soon as we get those up here, we'll get them signed.
Brian, are you guys working on, I mean, this is hard enough for us to read, so when somebody goes back and tries to find these changes, I mean, it's just almost impossible to try and figure this out.
Yeah.
You guys working on that in the impact area, or I mean, just overall, but?
Um so I just finished up updating our residential design guidelines. It's more of a user-friendly document for people to uh find how to develop their property for residential purposes, which covers a lot of the development around. Um.
I think that's important.
Yeah.
John Doe.
I'm always open to suggestions on how to make these things more understandable.
John Doe me, who's like, get the legalese out of it.
Yeah.
A little easier. Oh, and honestly, our poor prosecutor, we won't tell him that we feel sorry for him, but he uh trying to, trying to put together this, the county code, the city code, this is almost impossible. It's just, it's becoming very complex, very.
Well, it'll be a little bit simpler now, because it's almost fully back in alignment with city code.
Are you here for the next one too, on Crown Lane?
Yep.
We've got uh about eight more, nine more minutes worth of that one, so it comes up.
Are you gonna have people show up for that, do you think?
Uh the applicant said he was gonna be here.
Can you send us that one too?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to mute us until we?
Yeah, let's mute Doug until. Yeah, let's mute Doug until.
Run mute to Mr. Sherman.
Okay, welcome back. We're at 11:15 agenda. This is an action item. This is a public hearing on CUP 32-04, 400 Crown Lane, impact area. So Brian, is this an actual full-blooded public hearing?
Correct.
So at this time then, I will ask if anyone on the board has any ex parte or conflict of interest?
I do not.
Well, I've, com, alright, a conflict of interest, have contact. I know Mr. Beer from personal, but.
You're not gonna profit from this?
Not as far as this project is involved.
Okay, just as long as that's in the record, and I have none. So the public hearing is 11:16. And, uh, well, I guess you're gonna be the applicant, so I'll turn it over to you. Okay, come on up, sir. I don't, Vince Beer, Vince, Mr. Beer, welcome.
Thank you. You want me to state my address and stuff like normal? Vince Beer?
No, I don't need your address, just the town.
It's what?
Just the town.
Oh, McCall, McCall, Idaho.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, we've gone through the city process with attempting to build some storage units on 400 Crown Lane. It's, it's in compliance with the zoning. We've had zero public outcry or disagreement about the project there. The previous use was a outdoor storage yard for construction equipment and it was very noisy and the neighbors didn't like that. We've got worker housing that is on the site and we're gonna continue to keep that there onsite. It's really kind of the highest and best use for this, almost three acres, since there's no sewer and water. The worker housing does have its own well and septic, which we're working around. There's lots of statistics around. The civil engineers have already figured out that if, it's actually gonna be 139 units, not 190 like the application says. And the statistics nationally are that if you have 200 storage units, the average is about 37 cars a day of added traffic. So we'll have less than that. So it's already, you know, that information is out there and it's already been discussed and talked about. Do you have a little bit of stuff we're trying to work through with the county roads as far as where the, how much land we have to give up and some of that sort of thing, but I'm, I'm local here. We're gonna work through getting that all squared away. And we're just looking for your continued approval on what the city's already approved. You have any questions for me?
Um, what kind of discussions? You've been working with our road supervisor, I'm assuming, for the road development agreement?
I am not. I know Cindy's involved, but I am not sure. The, the civil engineer, which is Nathan Morgan and Nate Stroud, they have all had meetings and they're working, they're working through. I, I mean, it's very minor about, you know, where the center of the roadway is and some of that sort of stuff. So it's not anything major that we're gonna have big problems with, but those three have been, I don't know the, the road supervisor. I'm not sure who's been a part of that meeting, but I know it's with some of the county folks for sure.
I don't know why Cindy would be involved in something in the impact area, but.
Well, I know she's been helping Jeff with the RDA stuff.
Will we answer these with doors or is this open storage?
This is with doors. So this, you know, anecdotally, I came, there's, on my little street, there's eight boats that have to go somewhere in the winter. And obviously, the Mile High Marina's got those 10 buildings and those are full. And, but you can't put your patio furniture in there and you can't put your motorcycle in there. And so it just came to me that this would be a good service for the community, have a place that, big enough storages that you can put your boat or your classic car or whatever and get your patio furniture in the winter and have some access to stuff. And that's, that's the plan, is to have them all with doors.
But where are they gonna face?
They're, the, the buildings go north and south and the two outer buildings, the doors obviously face inward. And then there's a center building with doors going out each side, about a 35-foot driveway between them. The lot's 200 feet wide.
Mr. Beers, there is a pathway that's called out, that you'll be dedicating a pathway. Are you doing that on your own free will? You're willing to dedicate that pathway?
That's kind of a loaded question, but yeah, I mean.
But we need, we need the answer because.
Yes, yes, I am willing to do the pathway. I understand that the next door neighbors, the, uh, the nursery has got the same issue and they've got their money in escrow and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make that work, yes. I mean, it's unfortunate that out of 2,000 feet, there'll only be 400 feet of, of sidewalk. But, but I know that, that at some point, that's gonna be more commercial area and so, yes, we're gonna do that.
So Brian can answer some of these questions, but you are gonna require a sidewalk or gutter or just an easement?
Uh, do you want me to answer it now or wait till I?
Well, just wait to your, your presentation. So we recently, and I'm, I'm still gonna be looking at a storage unit on 55 and Elo Road. And one of the concerns that I have is the number of cars turning onto 55. So have you done a traffic study at that intersection? What is the impact to the Crown Lane and 55 intersection?
Well, the statistics show that if you had 200, I don't have, I don't have statistics for 139, but if you have, if you have 200 units, the national average is 37 cars a day. Half of those would come from Sampson Trail and the other half would probably come from 55. And right now, there's hundreds and hundreds of cars going down Crown Lane because of all the construction and it's been that way all summer long, but, so it's a very small amount of traffic.
And we've been hearing concerns over it all summer long. So that is my concern, is that we don't place high use in areas where the roadways won't accommodate that. And this is the same concern that I have over in the storage units.
This is very, very low traffic and realistically for the size, if we were building small units, that might be more of a concern, but it's, it's large units that people will.
What is the average size of your unit?
It's 10 by 25.
And can you tell me how many of those you have? Is it in here somewhere probably?
139.
I don't, they're all the same size?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This might be more of a question for Brian, but maybe you could help me, Mr. Beer. You're also gonna do some stormwater management, including the detention basin?
That's correct. The civil engineer's got all that. That's, we've already been through all that, yes.
Do you know how, how big that area is?
It is 200 feet wide and at least, um, I would, I, I don't know this exactly, but I meant, it's at least 75 to 100 feet by 200 feet. It's on the backside of the property. Storage units.
On the north side.
On the north side. And it's the same place we're gonna do the snow storage. Now, this site is very unusual because it's got about 6,000 yards of gravel that was brought in. And so it does not drain off of that. It percolates into the ground on this site, which is very unusual. And so that's part of the consideration with what we're doing, but it has definitely got drainage going to the back and that will percolate really well.
Doesn't that site kind of go from Crown Lane and goes downhill going north?
I believe it does, yes. Because that's where the, everything is in the back. There will be, I mean, it's a fairly flat site. There'll be some grading to make that all happen in that area, but yes.
I'll ask Brian if that has been looked at for the drainage issues. I did see that there was questions about you paving this versus gravel driveways. Where did we get to on that?
Well, it's, the, the, the letter of the law says it has to be an improved surface. It's my opinion that if we do gravel driveways, it will percolate better, but I'm gonna do whatever the final say is for the, from the civil engineers in the city.
Uh, one of the, you know, that's why it would be nice to have our road department here because gravel going onto a paved road, you're gonna destroy the sides of the road a little bit quicker than if it's coming pavement to pavement, but, um.
I believe the front area will be all, is, is gonna be paved, the parking, and so there'll be, there'll be a couple, maybe a couple hundred feet of pavement before you would hit on the, um.
I'm just not seeing that, so maybe we can have Brian speak to some of that kind of stuff.
I mean, there's been a lot of, a lot of work done, a lot of engineering.
What's the existing building that's there now? Is that a residence?
It's a, it's, it's, it's a residence. It's been there since 1972 and it's, it's housing, it's a, we, I've, I've got it as worker housing at this point. And I, and I intend to keep it as that. And it's, uh, it was a 1972 mobile home that we put, galvanized wainscote on and log cabin siding and changed all the windows and remodeled it. And it's a beautiful little cabin-y looking thing with a snow roof on it and it's providing a place for people to live.
Do you know what the, on the plot map, it shows an existing concrete block wall. I'm assuming it's on the, the east side. Do you know what that was there for?
I'm, I, I don't, I think it was really just that construction company having extra blocks and just dumping them around. And I think those will be reused possibly over on that west edge as retaining wall. But I'm, I'm not, there's nothing positive about that yet, but it's just, there's no rhyme or reason why they're there, where they're at at this point.
But it's, but, but they're on your property?
They are on my property. Well, it's, it's funny because Cody, your buddy, wants to buy them from me. I said, I'm not selling them to you until I figure out what, if we need them or not, so.
Okay, if there's no more questions for Mr. Beers, well, Brian, you want to come up and kind of explain anything else we should know?
Yes, thank you. Brian Parker, City Planner. Uh, yes, this application is for self-storage facility within a community commercial zone. McCall area impact code requires a conditional use permit for self-storage within CC zones. Yeah, generally meets the requirements for a conditional use permit. The McCall area planning and zoning commission, you have a seal of recommended approval for it at this site. To answer some of your questions, they did provide ITE manual traffic numbers that, as the applicant indicated, generally is a pretty low use by national standards. Uh, and our city engineer reviewed that and determined that it was unlikely that any improvements to Crown Lane were required at this time. Having said that, there is a requirement that they dedicate 35 feet from center line of Crown Lane into their property. It's kind of a little unclear at this point where exactly their property line is in relation to Crown Lines. We're working with their engineer to get that figured out.
Oh, within that 35 feet, Brian, is the sidewalk that you're?
Yeah, the pathway could be in there or could be in its own easement. It's up to them. The pathway would be required to be either constructed or equivalent escrow agreement. And then the stormwater, the city engineer is again, working with their engineer to get all that resolved. It appears that it has been designed adequately to manage stormwater, even with paving everything, which is a requirement.
So it is all gonna be paved?
Yeah.
So where is the retention pond on the map? Is it on the south side of this property next to Crown Lane?
North side.
I see the picture here and I don't see it on the plot. Down here?
It'd be on the north.
Know what you're showing right there?
Yeah, so this is all the stormwater retention.
Yep.
So it will be retained onsite? That won't, nothing?
Will be retained onsite. Um, yeah, so the retention ponds are basically everywhere. The narrow strip on the the north side of the property and then east-west in front of the storage buildings are all intended for.
What is the pitch of the roof? I mean, you're right on the property line.
They're a little pitch and they're going to hold snow.
They are gonna hold snow.
Brian, is there any, I know our areas are different from like Boise or whatever as far as statistics on the storage units, you know, as far as traffic.
Yeah.
You know, when you get to rural and you get out in, like we are in a, you know, resort area, people take the stuff out and it's raining and put it back in the. people take the stuff out and it's raining and put it back in the fall. Uh, you just don't get used like they do down in Boise where they live out of those suckers.
Traffic flows are generally different all over, no matter what the use is, no matter, you know, our peak flows are typically, peak traffic times are typically weekends in the summertime. Whereas basically everything else is modeled for weekdays at five o'clock. Um, so that is a known, uh.
We work out of ours, so I mean, we're in and out of there all the time.
Well, yeah, yeah, we, the contractors do.
Right.
Yeah, we, we hit it once a day and get our stuff and go. So we're there every day. But most people that just put their stuff in there, you don't see it again till fall.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, I didn't know if there was a study that had a.
I have not been able to locate a good study of resort town traffic patterns that feel defensible, is it defensible at this point?
Okay.
Use your best judgment.
Just thought I'd ask.
Brian, I guess my big question for all this is what's the difference between this, which the city PZ approved and the one that's out on Elo? Was it the land classification?
So zoning is part of it, that it is a commercial zone. And the neighborhood out there feels very strongly that commercial development should be retained in commercial zones. Uh, it is also not within the gateway corridor of the community. You can't see it from Highway fifty-five. Uh, there's not the same traffic constraints of this steep hill off of Elo, uh, that leads to some concern over people being able to stop quickly if there's turning movements and things like that, um.
What's the groundwater height here? Did you guys have that? That was a concern, Elton, maybe you were gonna contaminate or not.
It is deeper than eight feet.
Have any studies that way or?
I mean, we, we had, it happened, did a little repair of the sewer septic and there was, at eight feet, there was no water.
So I guess, uh, that's on that one.
And this was approved by your PZ?
Was recommended for approval.
For approval. And I'm trying to find the page that has the motion on it.
You call this a community?
Commercial.
Commercial.
H two has that.
I'm used to commercial, residential, industrial.
We have two, uh, currently active re- or commercial zones. There's the central business district, which is downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's our highest intensity development area. And then along Highway fifty-five and Cron Lane and a couple other locations in town is community commercial, which is more, it's still commercial development, but it's generally less intensive. Um, and be a little more auto-oriented than we would like to see in the downtown core.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause it shows, you know, residential on three sides and then commercial to the east.
Well, it, it is commercial for the most part along Cron Lane. That door is, um, a bunch of commercial buildings and there is a house at the far end, the far east end of Cron Lane. But for that, the nurseries next door, there's a lot of commercial, right? It's in with what's already there.
I'm just asking the questions, cause that was, that's the first thing I saw compared to the one over on Elo where it's surrounded by commercial, residential on one spot. That is, trying to make the comparisons, it's like, hmm. So that's why I was asking a community commercial, what?
Zoning on this one is commercial on all three sides, except for to the south is residential zone.
Yep.
It's so much different than the county because we don't zone.
Yeah.
I know.
And so, you know, that future land use is what the city looks to. This is going to be commercial in the future. And existing use doesn't always even be taken into account because it's what are they looking at for the future?
Mr. Beers, do you know what the right-of-way is now for Cron Lane? Is it a seventy-foot right-of-way? I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
It's not dedicated, it's a fifty-foot prescriptive easement.
Oh, okay, one of those.
Yeah, now what we just dealt with, with the Roberts, same thing.
That's why I'm asking, is he doing this of free will to be able to dedicate this?
Yeah, giving away his land.
Gotta do what you gotta do.
Any more questions for Brian? Not, I'm gonna move on down the rest of public hearing and take anybody that's on the phone or in the audience. Is, is there anyone that is a proponent of this? Probably get him backwards, but that's okay. These last records show there is none, anyone that is uncommitted. These records show there was none, anyone that is opposed. Please let the record show there was none, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for deliberations.
No, it is commercial zoned. That's what the city's looking for in that area. It's for their comp plan. I am concerned about the uses, uh, how it impacts fifty-five. We've had this conversation, fifty-five through that whole area is a problem. Um, and with, I'm glad to hear that it's hundred and thirty-nine units versus a hundred and ninety. I think that's a better use of that area. Looks like the city's done their due diligence and are in favor of this, so.
Yeah, I've read through all this and I'm, I don't have a problem with it. Uh, a little more understanding of what community commercial means. As long as the residences that are all around there are okay with that. That's, since nobody's been fussing about it. Guess you guys are in pretty good shape, so.
Interesting, we have such a large turnout, just a block south.
Just a block south, you know? And I talked to a few of those people and it was like, they didn't care about that. They care about how fast people were driving.
Well, and that's my concern. So on Sampson Trail, we are putting a walking trail even as we speak and which will be going to the school. So these intersections are becoming more and more, um, significant when we start putting a lot of land use on them. So it's, you know, I, I do hesitate to do things without actually having some kind of a good plan for these intersections. Look at that intersection, I'm not as familiar with that one, but.
It's Cron Lane?
Sampson Trail.
It's right at the top of a hill, I believe.
So good sightlines on both sides?
I think so, that's there at Kelly's, uh, Kelly's place where he has, uh, has he sheep, has he cows?
Yaks.
Clarks.
Kelly Clarks.
He's got yaks over there.
Yeah, what, what's, can't remember those cows' names. Fluffy cows, but not buffalo.
So Brian, there were seven conditions of approval, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? I'd entertain a motion to approve CUP twenty-three oh four with the seven conditions of approval.
I'll make a motion to approve CUP twenty-three dash zero four, four hundred Cron Lane with the, uh, seven conditions of approval.
Yeah, plenty of time if you need to think about it.
I'm just trying to look at intersections. I mean, I think we need to start being more sensitive. Yes, this is in the middle of that block, but you're draining things to every one of those intersections. And it is something that we're gonna have to start requiring some off-site improvements in order to, you know, make change. We're, we're approving high uses, the intersections, that we're not requiring any off-site improvements at all. And so that's a concern that I am starting to have with all of these areas, not just this one application.
Which side of the road is that walkway gonna be on, on Sampson Trail? Do we know yet? It's on the east side or west side?
Yeah, we, we had that presentation, I, I don't know if it was last week, week before.
I think it's on the east side.
It, uh, now, most of it's on the west side.
But they ran into.
One section of it that they moved back to the east, but, um, I'll second the motion, but we are gonna be working on a road development agreement. That's probably what you're working on with the county. And we need to look at that, the roadway width. We need to make sure that, you know, the sidewalk is in an area that we can actually maintain our roads there. And, uh, we'll be having conversations about, um, you know, continual improvement on some of these off-site locations.
That's all, that's all part of the discussion.
Yeah, and in the seven approvals, that, the road development agreement is one of them?
Mm-hmm.
And I will second that motion.
And I, before I vote on it, I think it's kind of important everybody understand that we started out a year, a few years back with road development agreements where if you donated the right-of-way, that was considered good enough. And now we're looking at that differently, that the right-of-way should not count. That's in order for you to do your development, you're gonna make the road out front a deeded piece of property. And we're gonna request more funds. And I know you've said you've been in discussion with Jeff at our road department, but he's had a death in the family, been out for a few weeks. And hopefully when he gets back, we can get back on this. But it's, we're, we're trying to reshape those development agreements to, um, not give credit for right-of-way because that's part of your development.
It's not really a road development agreement anymore.
No, it's a development.
These are just part of the development agreements that we're working on.
I'll just refer to. Okay, so we got a motion to second to approve CUP twenty-three oh four with the seven conditions of approval. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you guys very much. I, I mean, we're gonna do a nice job of making this look good. And I, I think it'll be a good addition for the community. And, and I'm a hundred percent confident that it's gonna have very little traffic impact because it's just, the nature of what we're trying to do is people putting votes and that sort of stuff in, that there will be very little traffic.
I like the colors you picked, red and yellow. I think that's great with the green roof.
Isn't that beautiful?
That'd be awesome.
Well, I think, you know, to me, the difference between this one and the one on Elo is the speed of the highway. This is thirty-five through Cron Lane until you get past that and then it's forty-five. That makes, to me, makes a huge difference. And I think if IDD dropped that speed limit past Elo, we wouldn't have a lot of issues.
Well, plus they've already got a whole lot of units there and adding more just adds, adds more traffic, but.
Well, and that's why we decided to do the trail on Sampson, so kids could get to school without getting ran over.
Yeah.
And I think that's gonna be big down the road. They're gonna see a lot of use on that trail.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah.
That road is supposed to be thirty-five, I believe, from the corner all the way to the highway on Elo. I think that's thirty-five, I don't think it's forty-five.
Growth is gonna happen and.
Forty-five?
Across the street, it could be housing and the kids would use the, the path at some point anyway. So I, you know, it's, I, I don't think that the side we're on is gonna get a lot of residential development. And it's, and it's gonna be dependent on the sewer and water getting out there too, so. But that's gonna take, I mean, we still have to think twenty years down the road.
Yep.
I might be a very old man then, but.
Oh, no, you'll be a young guy still. In your heart.
Don't I wish?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you guys so much.
Okay, we're gonna keep right on going today. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is approval of the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare Idaho County Jail's grant. Kenzie, come on up. If I remember right, what was? This, what was this for?
Um, so this is on behalf of the Valley County Sheriff's Department. And this is a grant from, um, the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare for twenty-six thousand for, um, mitigating.
Coronavirus.
Well, coronavirus.
SARS.
And other, you know, infectious diseases.
And this is like a softener type machine that you use as solution to clean everything, is that correct?
Correct, it's, uh, water, ninety-nine point nine percent water-based.
Yeah.
Salt tablets are, uh, chemical reaction.
Uh-huh.
Uh, how it does it, it's, uh.
Where's this gonna be in the jail, Mike?
That's something, uh, sheriff and I are actually discussing. So, um, I don't know if the jail is the best place for this because of the potential for this. Not just disinfecting the jail, but all county, um, usage. So I don't, I don't have offhand what maintenance, um, spends on chemicals. But this could also replace what maintenance provides for the courthouse. So this, this is more morphing into a county-wide idea.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I just talked to sheriff about it this morning cause I asked some questions about our cleaning contract that we have, uh, for the courthouse, the sheriff's office. If we provide that solution for them to clean, uh, this could be, uh, bigger than just the jail. So that's, uh, kind of something that we've been thinking about and it's, it's kind of exciting.
Is this like a water softener type product?
That's the package for like the installation, is it's a water softener, um, a couple other things. But ultimately, and it, it's installation. So what you saw on the application was kind of the breakdown of it. But ongoing, it, um, creates disinfectant and cleaning solutions. And all you have to do is add salt to it monthly, a salt solution.
I want one in my house.
I know.
I got, uh, I got one at our place, cause we tested some iron when we first moved in. So we got a, uh, iron filter, basically what it was. And it flushes every, every three days. It flushes it, our water tastes fabulous. But I don't know about, I mean, what yours sounds like is, um, oh, what was that company? It's been around for years.
Maytag?
Elegan? Elegan, it sounds just like that, cause they use the salts.
Okay.
Elegan's been here for eons.
Yeah, it's a super cute little machine though. It's not like, I mean, if you, there's, I don't know if I sent this in the application, but this is what it looks like. I don't know if you can see that, I can bring it up there if you want.
Yeah, if you can bring it up, please, Kenzie.
And I highlighted important information.
And Mike, is this, is there a match to this grant or is this a full hundred percent?
Yes, it's hundred percent grant, um, for twenty-six thousand. And they might actually award a little bit more depending on how many applications they get.
It would be installed, I mean, we're all in city waters, it'd be installed right where the filter system goes in.
Reach, preach building.
You need a water source, an ethernet cable and a power source.
Interesting.
Trying to think of a, uh, logistically good place for this for.
I'm thinking the Sallyport.
Or even the EOC or something like that.
Yeah, maybe in the garage or something in the EOC.
Interesting.
I know we've had cleaning contracts in the past with different folks where they provided the chemicals and we provided the chemicals and it's kind of a wash, really, either way, but.
I don't understand how you, if you put it in the EOC, how does it impact over here? Not really county-wide solution, it's.
Maintenance filling up the bottles. Uh, logistically, I don't have that answer right now, this is.
Don't tax my brain one day.
Is this, is this something that's like Scott would have to be changing out the salts periodically or how?
Yeah, you, you have to add salt to it, but, uh, based on the usage, I don't think we're gonna be using it.
Well, and I think it's really important for people to realize that in a jail setting, to go in there and start spraying antiseptics, you know, some of the cleaners will put me right out of the bathroom. It's like, man!
Yeah, this is hypoallergenic.
We're not exposing inmates to that kind of chemical.
Yeah.
Fog.
Let's try it, we might need more than one, but.
We brought up the safety issue, uh, we've always had issue. We give cleaner into the cells, especially during COVID, uh, rather than the deputies going in their house and everything down. Inmates had a cleaning solution in, in their cell block. And where, um, the worry there for us was ingesting or, um, safety for the deputies.
For the deputies, yeah.
This is water-based. It's, it, it just changes a, a lot of things for us in the safety aspect of it.
I, I like this. EK sixty and FC, us cannot be weaponized.
Good thing for jail.
Have you talked to Scott at all about this? Is he okay with this?
I, I have not, that's, uh, it's now something as this is kind of growing. I'm, and I'm preparing for down the road. I know today is just requesting for.
Just to go for the grant.
Go for the grant. Um, but yeah, talking to Scott and getting an idea of logistics and how that would work for the, the county, not just the jail.
Well, does this, um, so this wouldn't be used, this is just for cleaning. This isn't used for being online for water, our water system at all. This is just strictly a, for a cleaning product.
Correct.
Oh, okay, I'm following you now.
More like a forty percent vinegar or something like that.
Yeah, kills, kills black mold. I mean, this is, that's pretty decent.
Berkelosis, MRSA.
tuberculosis, MRSA, which are things that typically plague jails.
All the hospitals need it.
And that's essentially what, what it's kind of becoming, is ho- hospital-grade, uh, cleaning solution.
Nice. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare County Jail's grant.
Second, would you second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
One thing I didn't touch on, uh, we spend a lot of money in the jail specific. I don't even know about the county side and the maintenance side. Just on cleaning solution, so this does have a, uh, contract with it, twenty-four hundred dollars per year. Um, I spoke with, uh, Brooke Miller, and, uh, the jail could essentially fund that if absolutely needed.
If you're not buying cleaners.
Yeah, with what we're doing. So whether we create a new line item, take from that current line item to pay for this, that I, I just wanna be upfront with everyone.
I think that was why, Mike, um, is that Scott is the one that orders all that stuff, and so I'm assuming he would basically cut back X amount of for jail, and that would, we'd use that to pay his contract.
Correct, and we order our own cleaner.
Oh, do you?
Jail, maintenance orders their own cleaner for the county. So this is a discussion that I need to have with Scott to, uh, figure out how it works for, for him as well.
Okay, all right. Well, it'd be great to start it out in the jail and see how it goes, and then if it was awesome, then we can expand it to the rest of the county.
Absolutely.
We'll allocate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So at this time, we're gonna recess for lunch, and we'll see everyone back.